Good evening. Notice of a public meeting of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville pursuant to Chapter 551, Title V of the Texas Government Code, the Texas Open Meetings Act notices hereby given that the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, in accordance with Article 5, Section 12 of the Charter of said city, will convene an executive session and irregular meeting on Tuesday, December 12, 2017, at 5:45 PM and at 6:00 PM in the commission chambers on the second floor of Brownsville City Hall, Old Federal Building, located at 1001 East Elizabeth Street, Brownsville, Cameron County, Texas. We will begin with an executive session, Executive Session A, consultation with attorney pursuant to the Texas Government Code, Section 551.071, regarding a matter in which the duty of the attorney to the governmental body under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the State Bar of Texas clearly conflicts with this chapter.
I got it. Motion to move to executive session.
Do I have a second?
Yes, that's a second.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, one indivisible.
And please remain standing for the prayer. Father God, we thank you for your love, your grace, and your mercy. And Lord Jesus, we thank you that, in spite of our sin, you chose to leave your place in heaven and come to earth, being born as a virgin, being subjected to so many perils here on earth for our sake. And Lord, we ask you to help us be a part of the celebration of your birth and to spread that love and joy and sacrifice as we deal with the people around us. Help us to be loving and accepting and blessing each other. And Lord, we thank you for this meeting here today. We ask you to lead and guide our mayor and our commissioner and everyone that's presenting in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Next, we have action on item discussed in executive session.
Motion to proceed as advised.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next, we have the mayor's activity update.
Actually, I just want, on behalf of myself and the entire City Commission, wish everybody a very blessed and joyful holiday season. This is our last meeting and for the year, and I'm sure everybody shares that same sentiment, and I'm just speaking on behalf of the city. So, other than that, that's all I have.
Commissioner's activity update.
Mayor, I'll start on this side. Also, wishing a Merry Christmas to our employees, to those that weren't at the Christmas party. Merry Christmas to you and your families. May you have a blessed season, and of course, to our citizenship. Merry Christmas to everybody on behalf of all of the City Commission, and sorry for my absence, I was going through some health issues, but I'm back and I'm ready to get to work.
We're happy that you are.
Thank you.
Commissioner, we missed you.
I'll go ahead and pick up next, and I just want to wish everybody a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. This year has been, I feel like, a roller coaster from a lot of changes in politics, and then we had the hurricanes in the middle of the year that devastated so many people in Texas. That was something that I was so proud that the city was involved in the rebuilding and helping out so many people who were in distress. And then, to the miracle of snow a few days ago, you can blame your city commissioners for that one, for the fact that we didn't get as much snow as everybody else did. But nonetheless, this has been a wonderful year, and I hope that, well, a wonderful year full of ups and downs, but you know what? We all are here together, and that's all that matters. And I hope to remind you to appreciate your, if you still have grandparents and parents. I know the other day, my grandmother asked me, "Can you take me to Dillard's?", and I had a million things to do. And so, we get there, and it's frustrating that I usually shop really fast, and she wants to look at everything. But midway through, I stopped and reminded myself, these are those very special moments that you have to take your grandmother out, and you have to spend time with her, and you have to talk to her, and you have to show her how much you love her. So, I wish that, the same for you. Appreciate everybody that you have in your lives and let them know. And I wish you a very Merry Christmas. Thank you.
I will continue on bootstrapping off Commissioner Longoria and Commissioner Tetra. I want to wish everybody happy holidays, Felices Fiesta's. I hope everybody gets to spend time with their family, and best wishes from the commission and the mayor in this coming year, 2018. Mejores de self para todos este 2018.
So, I would like to remind everyone that next Friday is the Christmas clovia, Friday night. Put some lights on your bikes, put your Santa hats on. Santa, thanks to the fire department, is going to be with us, and please look at the website to find the route through Buena Vista to celebrate a very special part of our city. And above all, it's free and it's fun, so please don't miss out on that. Also, it's a beautiful time of the year to, especially except for the snow, in terms of getting outdoors and enjoying the not-so-hot weather. So, as you get ready to enjoy the holidays, make some memories with your children and your family outside. One of the best places to make those memories is in a park or on a trail. Check it out. If you haven't done so, you will find I am not wrong. And in saying that, I'll call your attention to the December issue of the Texas Parks and Wildlife magazine. Texas Parks and Wildlife just turned 75 years old, and to celebrate that, they wanted to make their December edition all about the valley. So, the managing editor called me up a couple months ago and came and spent the morning with Eva Garcia and Ramiro Gonzalez and myself touring what we've done in terms of trails and connectivity and all of that stuff, and they were very, very impressed. So, look for the December issue because we're in it, but also look for the December issue because it features everything about parks and birding and beautiful outdoor spaces that we have right in our backyard across the valley that we sometimes forget about. A great way to spend the holidays is check out some of these places. Most of them are free, they're all fun, and you will make some wonderful memories. So, happy holidays, check it out.
Just like to take this time to wish all our citizens here in Brownsville, our City Commission, the Brownsville team, a very Merry Christmas and a prosperous New Year. The best wishes for everybody. Thank you.
I'd like to also wish everyone a blessed holiday season and say that it's been an honor serving you this year on the commission.
Okay, well, thank you, guys. Thank you very much. Presentation?
Next, we have a presentation, the semi-annual impact fee report update.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the commission. Tonight, I would like to introduce Mr. Richard Campbell, who is a consultant with Arcades and will be presenting the semi-annual impact fee report.
Good evening. Good to see everyone again.
Right.
Thank you for having me. Not a lot, not a lot of things to do tonight or go over, not really a major action item thing that we're doing. This is, if you remember, part of the process. We just kind of, twice a year, we'll go through, kind of bring everybody up to speed, what's happening from the impact fee standpoint, what's being done, where do the numbers fall out from what the projections were, that type of thing, what's been spent, what's in our funds. So, we just, this is just part of the process, things that are required, little bit of bookkeeping, record-keeping type of things. So, we'll run through it, and please stop me if you have questions, but it's just fairly straightforward, and we had a little bit of difference. If you see, we're looking at it as of December 31, 2016, so we had a little changes. Usually, this is twice a year. We had some things changed because we're kind of, we're actually in the middle of the process, we're developing new impact fees. So, it kind of pushes things off a little bit from when we're doing the reporting. So, we'll do this, and then we'll follow up at the beginning of next year and kind of catch everything up, bring everything up to speed. So, what we're just going to talk about, we'll look a little bit on the projects, where the projects fell out at the end of 2016 for both water and wastewater, what was generated service-wise, what units we developed, and then the impact fees. First, we're going to look at the water. If you notice, and we started this because we really started the process of truly reporting. We weren't doing the reporting and everything prior to the 2009 impact fee, so we started this process in 2009. So, we're kind of going from there right now. The original, if you know, was a little over $35 million in 2009 when we developed impact fee-related projects. You know, since then, if you notice, we had some changes. Some of these are just changes from the estimate on projects. Some of these were actually from construction, the projects came out different, and you see, we had some that we just ended up with subtract amounts, and we actually added some revisions on some of these projects. And then, if you look at the very bottom, when we've added some of the projects, we've taken away on some of them from cost, and then we have the little over $20 million. This was where we actually funded some of the project through commercial paper instead of using impact fees. So, what we've done there, we kind of had to take that portion of the project out, it's no longer an impact fee-related item because we are funding it differently. It's going to end up going through rates, and so this is, that's the adjustment on that part here, which brings us down from, starting in 2016, to a little over $12 million there in impact fee-related on the waterside. Then, as we went through this, you know, part of the process when we're doing the impact fees was we started off developing land use assumptions, what's happening, where's the growth going to occur, what are we looking at, what kind of growth is going to occur? Then, we went and developed a master plan to go along with that, and then we presented you with the impact fees or the maximum dollars. So, we haven't done anything, no suggested changes on the land use assumptions and the growth right now. Then, you look, we still have, as of October 2016, the actual impact fees that were adopted. If you remember, this go-around, prior to, we just had one impact fee for the city. This go-around, we decided to go ahead and split it up into two, the Area 1 being right here, our area right in this area, and the infrastructure associated with that. Then, the Area 2 and 3 is just the outline area where we're really expecting more of the growth and more of the infrastructure needs. So, and this is what we're looking at right now, this is what you actually adopted for impact fees for the water. Then, we look at the wastewater side. We started off with a, you know, with a higher number. We had some things, we had plant expansions and a lot of infrastructure needs on that. Again, you know, additions from projects, extra additional dollars, both project needs are actually pricing, and the same thing, we backed some out. A lot of the things on the wastewater, on the wastewater side, if you notice, are lift station projects, there were a lot of changes where they come in lower than what was originally estimated. And then, at the bottom then, as well, that $6 million number, also dollars that went to commercial paper instead of being funded through impact fees to pay for some of the projects. So, we end up with, through the adjustments, that original number comes out to a little over $68, almost $69 million. Again, no suggested changes on the land use assumptions and the growth picture right now, and then the impact fee, actual impact fee dollars, this is what was adopted for both areas. We'll look at the waterside, service units, new customers coming in. So, we had from the beginning time period through 2016, we've had a little over 1,400 service units, not quite customers, but service units. And then, on the wastewater side, a little over 1,300, 1,337 customers up through December We've collected on the waterside about $2.7 million over the time period. Wastewater, little over $3.5 million. And then, from where we stand at the end of 2016, we took the year-end from beginning balance of July 1st, we started with about $2.9 million in there. We've collected in that six-month period leading up to the end of 2016, collected a little over $600,000. We had to refund almost $300,000. This can be different things, either the project didn't actually occur, so we needed to refund impact fee dollars, or more often the case, developer agreements where they went ahead and built out, and then we're crediting back as impact fee dollars are collected, so they'll go ahead and they'll overbuild, and then as impact fee dollars are paid onto it, we receive it, and we're going ahead and credit them back that money. Over that six-month period, we collected another $129,000, and then we really end up, ending balance of 2016 was a little over $3.7 million. As we talked about, you know, we did in 2015, so the next time we stand would be probably about in March, we'll talk about this again, and we'll look through the end of 2017. So, this year now, since the time between the time period for this report and then this next one, we'll have the land use assumption plan was done, the CIP was done, and then we updated also the impact fees. So, and that went into 2016, October 2016, as you put the ordinance in place. And that's really it. In a nutshell, it was nice and simple today.
Thank you. Any questions, guys?
No.
Okay, well, appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Item number four.
Next, we have consent agenda items A and B.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Public hearings, and I understand, item number five, city secretary said that that number five was not necessary.
Yes.
And if I can give a brief explanation of why it's not necessary, it's the type of bonding that we're looking at is different now than it was initially, and the taxable situation would have required a public hearing, but this is a different type of animal. And if you all want an explanation, counsel is here, but other than that, it would be omitted and not have to be dealt with. We're okay?
Want to strike?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number six.
Public hearing number six, public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number 235-2017-073-S to allow apartments and apartment A use in Dwelling G for a 1.489 acre tract of land out of Block 24, Chicago Garden subdivision, also known as Brownsville Land and Improvement Company Holdings and share 28 of the Espirito Santo grant located at 925 North Iowa Avenue.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Commissioners. This first case tonight is for a specific use to allow apartments in what's currently in Dwelling G. You can see the surrounding area has several, several different zoning, including apartments, dwelling, and dwelling retail. This is part of the Transition East District in our future land use plan, which should be approximately half residential, with the remaining uses a balance of community facilities, commercial, institutional, and industrial use. Residential uses should be mostly single-family dwellings with an average density of two dwellings per acre. Here, you can see to the north are single-family dwellings, commercial businesses, and to the east is single-family dwellings, more commercial businesses, and civic institutions. To the west, as well as to the south, are more single-family dwellings, and to the south, there's commercial businesses. This is hard to see, I apologize for that here. This is, they're proposing a playground here. This texture, everything here is landscaped area. They're also proposing two different bicycle parking racks, these two locations. There were 24 mailouts and zero written opposition for this case. The Planning and Zoning Commission supports a specific use permit to allow apartments in Dwelling G.
Okay. Is anyone here on this issue? Have now entertained a motion to close public hearing.
Motion to close public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number seven.
Public hearing number seven, public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number 235-2017-075 to rezone from Dwelling A to Apartment H for 1.241 acres in the land commonly known as Brownsville Land and Improvement Company subdivision, located at 123 PT Lot 9, Block 5, Guerra Park in Resaca, and 1.656 acres out of 2.726 acres in Brownsville Land and Improvement Company subdivision, located 124 and adjacent 30.0 inches of abandoned row located near Wild Rose Lane.
This area is just south of VICC, that is the area to the north and to the west. As you can see, surrounding it is dwelling use as well as apartments. This is part of the core west district in our future land use plan, which should be primarily residential. Of those residential uses, they should have a density of three dwelling units per acre and should be single-family dwellings and attached apartments. Here's an aerial, you can see to the north and to the west is VICC, that has single-family dwellings as well as some apartments. To the east is more single-family dwellings, though it is currently zoned apartments, and to the south is single-family dwellings. There were 23 mailouts and zero written opposition in this case. The Planning and Zoning Commission supports this rezoning, Dwelling A to Apartment H.
Okay. Anyone here on this issue?
Would it close public hearing?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Would you approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number eight.
Public hearing number eight, public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number 235-2017-0903 to rezone from Dwelling W and Dwelling Z to Dwelling G for Block Number 3, lots 4 through 16 of Woods and subdivision Phase 1, located near Norma Pachero Lane.
This is a city-initiated case. The lots that we're proposing to change are currently zoned Dwelling W and Dwelling Z. The surrounding area, the subdivision that currently exists is already zoned Dwelling G, which is what we're proposing this be changed to. This area is part of the Emerging City Central District, which should be mostly residential with an average density of one acre. To the northwest, south, and to the east, to an extent, is vacant land and single-family There were 60 mailouts and zero written opposition in this case. The Planning and Zoning Commission does support this rezone from Dwelling W and Dwelling Z to Dwelling G.
Okay. Anyone here on this issue?
Motion to close public hearing. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Item number nine.
Public hearing number nine, public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number 2017-235.88, amending the existing boundaries within the 031 non-residential overlay district and dealing with related matters.
The 031 non-residential overlay district prohibits these different uses, which include dwelling units, group quarters, RV parks, medical inpatient facilities, schools, churches, daycares, medical clinics, auditoriums, and stadiums. This ordinance is proposing to change the existing boundaries of this overlay. Here's a map where you can see the light purple pink is where the overlay currently is, near the port area. Where it has blue hash marks over it, it's currently in the ETJ, and we would like that to be removed. And where it has red hash is part of the city limits, and that's also where we're proposing that it be removed. This area is part of three different districts in our future land use plan, the Transition Central District, the Town Corridor, and the Loop Corridor. The Transition Central District is mostly residential land with an average density of two dwellings per acre. The Town Corridor is also primarily residential with small clusters of commercial land use and should have a density of three dwelling units per acre. The Loop Corridor is primary commercial, but with a healthy mixture of residential, institutional, and industrial land. Residential uses should have a density of four dwellings per acre. This is the aerial. I also have two closer images so we can get a little closer. Here is the north part, as you can see, this is 802. The northern section has public schools in, it has two public schools as well as a BISD record building. It has single-family dwellings and a church and some vacant land. The southern portion has apartments, vacant land, and some manufacturing uses. This section is on Indiana Avenue, right here, and it has single-family dwellings as well as some commercial businesses, including a gas station. There were 248 mailouts and zero written opposition in this case, and the Planning and Zoning Commission does support this proposed amendment to the existing 031 non-residential overlay boundaries.
Anyone here on this issue?
I have a question. Does this mean that it's going to be more restrictive as to what can go in those areas?
It's actually to remove restrictions.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
So, now you can have a church there.
Yes. Thanks.
We support that.
Okay. Are we taking, are we going to go ahead and pass the basket, Reverend?
Yes.
Anyway.
Close public hearing?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion to approve. Second.
All those, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item number 10, this is the sec, I'm sorry.
Public hearing number 10, public hearing on second reading on ordinance number 2017-1633, annexing territory to the City of Brownsville and extending the boundary limits and adopting a service plan.
This issue was brought to us before for the first hearing, the first reading last Tuesday, and this is the second reading in accordance with the law, right?
It's just second public hearing, and that will be, that will be it.
Right.
Until January, then it will be brought back to or added to the agenda second to item for approval.
Okay. Does anybody need for this young lady to go through the same procedure?
Motion to close public hearing?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, and that's all we need. Thank you. Item number 11, public comment.
Next, we have the public comment period. We did have five citizens, and I'll call out their names, see if they're here. The first one we have is Mr. Joe Collin Uvayas. He's not here. Next, we have Ms. Ofelia Alonso. She's not here either. Third one is Aisa Nizak. She's not here either.
Some of these we heard last week.
Yes. The next one we have is Mr. Juan Trevino, and the last one is Sadie Hernandez.
Okay.
So, no one is present here for the public comments, so we'll go on to the next agenda items.
Next item is number 12.
Agenda item number 12, consideration in action to adopt ordinance number 2017-1634, authorizing the issuance, sale, and delivery of approximately $17,565 in aggregation principal amount of the City of Brownsville, Texas Combination Tax and Revenue Certificates of Obligation Series 2017, securing the payment thereof by authorizing the levy of an annual ad valorem tax and a pledge of certain surplus revenues of the city's municipal landfill system, and approving and authorizing the execution of a paying agent registrar agreement, a purchase contract, and official statement, and all other instruments and procedures related thereto.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Honorable Mayor, members of the City Commission, item 12 is, will be discussed or prepared by, by Nueño Jose with the train host. Also, any, to answer any questions regarding legal issues, Mr. Mr. Also, any, to answer any questions regarding legal issues, Mr. Tom Spurgeon with Michael Parker. Good evening, mayor. Members of the commission, Noe Inajosa with Strain Inajosa and company, service financial office of the city. With me is Tom Spurgeon. So Tom, why don't you come up and kind of walk them through, through this process? Make sure that at least some of them who are near the commission understand.
Yeah, let me just start off real quickly. The, we're going to actually present on, for the next three items, because they're all kind of related. Noe's going to give you the results of the pricing that took place today, so you really have three different ordinances today. One will be for the certificates of obligation, which is item number twelve. Item thirteen are for what we call the public property finance contractual obligations. Those are all for personal property, mainly equipment, but it can be used for other types of personal property. And the last is a refunding bond ordinance. There are actually two series of bonds in that one ordinance. One is a tax-exempt issue. We call it the series two thousand seventeen A. The second is a, is a taxable issue. It originally was going to be tax-exempt with, subject to A M T. It's a, it's a refinancing of some property out, or some projects out at the airport. And we ended up making a decision a couple of days ago that it made some sense to change it into a taxable transaction to just try to solve any, or not solve, but to just avoid any sort of potential IRS scrutiny on, on that transaction or something like that. It just, it just clears up any sort of potential issues with that. So that's actually a taxable issue. There's still savings with that issue, and Noe will get into more of that, but, but that's, that's sort of an overview of what you're doing. So the presentation will actually be these next three items.
You want to read all of them?
I'll read them separate so you can vote on each one individual.
Okay.
And that's fine, Francis. I mean, I'm okay with that as long as they-
Because there's three ordinances, so-
Correct, right. But as he's speaking, he'll be talking about all three of them, then you're right, individual actions.
Why don't I make the presentation first, and then we read them?
Yes.
Okay, so basically, back on, if you go over the front page of, well, not the front page, but the following page, on page one. This is an overview literally of all your mortgages and how the city pays all of its debt. If you were to do absolutely nothing, you will stop at the fourth column from left to right where it says existing debt service. So in two thousand and seventeen, the fiscal year that just concluded, you paid seventeen million dollars and ninety-two thousand five seventy-eight. In eighteen, if you were to not borrow this financing today, you'd be paying sixteen million eight. And then you'll see the succeeding year in nineteen, sixteen million three, sixteen million nine ninety-seven, seventeen million one forty-nine, and so on and so forth. That's if you do nothing. So today, what you're borrowing is what we call in our business new money projects, is the shaded blue column. At the very top, you'll find how it's a property tax financing out over twenty years. You're financing to fund seventeen million two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars for different projects that I believe staff has presented to you in the past, and you so have approved. We will borrow to get the seventeen million two sixty-five, fifteen million three hundred and twenty thousand. So we're literally borrowing two million dollars less than in the paramount, but I'll walk you through how we get there. At the end of the day, the T I C is the true interest cost. That's your borrowing rate of three fifty-two percent. So that's the rate that you got for going out twenty years and borrowing fifteen million dollars. You got a rate of three fifty-two. It is a fixed rate, and what we mean by that is that as you pay this loan over the life, that interest rate does not fluctuate, so it's not a floating rate. You could say that the first, where you see the five hundred and seventy-seven eight forty-four, that eighteen maturity has a two percent rate. The following nineteen and twenty has a three percent rate, and so on and so forth. It doesn't exceed five percent. But at the end of the day, those rates are fixed. The next column is the column that Tom was referring to, personal property, and that's for the various equipment needs. You will fund in your construction fund account five million dollars. You borrow four million seven twenty. The going rate is two, was, the, the rate that we were able to negotiate for you was two eighty-seven. That's all your new money. So if you were to not borrow any money this year, you're paying on principle, if you remember, back on, on November the seventh, I shared with you that the city's total debt at the time was about a hundred and thirty-five million dollars. If you were to borrow nothing, you would pay off this year in eighteen, eleven and a half million. So bring down your debt to about the one twenty-four level. But since you're borrowing about twenty million right here, the fifteen plus, fifteen-three plus the four million seven is about twenty million, your debt at the end of the year will be one forty-four. Now, when you say, well, how does that compare to other cities? Who else is monitoring this thing? In this book, on the very back, there are two rating reports. One from Standard and Poor's, on the very back, and you'll see a report that reads basically, and just to highlight, they make very strong comments on your management, on the flexible, strong financial position the city's in. And, and they make a note of the fact that you, you were able to adopt this five-year plan. One of the concerns we had about borrowing money from the city was not having a plan, some sort of a preliminary plan on how to fund in the future the airport project. So we sort of presented to them an idea we have for the airport project that we will share with you sometime, hopefully in next year in nineteen, in eighteen, I'm sorry. But for now, we wanted to be sure that we had an idea of how we could fund the terminal project, and we'll share that within the future. But what they brought in is a, as a concern, you know, it's something that we've always heard, that the economy not moving fast enough, the median incomes being low, poverty still continue to be a, a strong concern for them. And, and that is reflected even in the Moody's report, where basically they said if, if we were, if, if there was a risk for lowering the dam, for lowering the credit rating, if you reflected on your reserve levels. So put attention when Pete, Mr. Gonzalez, or Lopek, when I tell you, how does my savings account look like? How does my fund balance look like? The fund balance fortunately is going to increase this year.
Almost looks promising, but it's still large.
Yeah, so you have, you are judged by someone out there, just like you and I are. You know, when you make an investment in a business, what, you know, how much in savings do you have in comparison to your operating expenses? And they, they certainly recognize your efforts of keeping, keeping the city in line. Your staff supports you with that in terms of providing you appropriate budgets, and, and then the audits reflect that, and the rain agency is pretty much blessed that. Because of those ratings, J P Morgan, who is who we negotiated this loans with, we were successful in giving you those rates in page one at the very top there of the three five two and the two eighty-seven. Then the ones that are in green columns, those were nothing but refinancings. We just looked at what some of your debt, what, what some of your loans that were outstanding, what rate they were, you were paying, and how much savings we could get you. So in that third column, or on the, on the green, the first green column, you'll see seven hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars. That's a benefit to you. So what we did there, we actually plugged in your savings on year two at five eighty-one. That's what we gave you most of the savings. Why? Because if you remember, your capital improvement plan, it's not just about borrowing this twenty million dollars. You got about another twenty-five million dollars in the next four years to borrow. And I think this commission's always wondered, Noe, as long as we borrow and we don't raise taxes, that's what we want. So we, we've been trying to take a look, every single time we bring something to you, we take a look at what are your current loans? What, what rates are you paying on the current loans? And if, if we can refinance it and get the benefit of those savings, use them so that we don't have to raise taxes. So and, and for all practical purposes, everything that you're doing here will have not a tax rate impact. If you go to the very far right-hand column, the third from the right to the left, that's your I N S tax rate. The tax rate today, P is about seventy cents. And twenty-five cents of that seventy is to pay debt. Well, if you look in seventeen, you, you had a twenty-five point one-three tax rate. In eighteen, it dropped to twenty-five-ten. So even by virtue of having to borrow this loan, that tax rate is already set, and you're going to pay it. It's not going up for eighteen or nothing. It stays right there. Most importantly, when you go to nineteen, it stays at twenty-five nine, at twenty-five point one cents. Where you're going to have some pressure is going to be in twenty-twenty. You notice how the rate goes up to twenty-five seventy-eight, twenty-five ninety-eight, twenty-five ninety-six. But then in twenty-twenty-five, look at that big drop from twenty-five cents to fourteen cents. So what we try to do next time, probably in a couple of years, when we bring in the plan financing for C I P projects in two years from now, we will find other bonds that we can probably refinance for savings, allocate the savings where the pressure is in, so that you don't raise taxes, hopefully in two years from now. Now, you take into account a lot of things, what the borrowing rates may be, what property values will be doing. You know, we, we're presenting to you property value growth of one and a half percent. This year compared to last, it grew by two point eight percent. So we're trying to be as conservative or as realistic as possible, and, and that's what we did with that structure. Any questions so far? The next page on page two, that's basically to share with you what we presented to you on November the seventh and where we were on November the twelfth. The rates we thought you were going to get back on November seventh on the first loan was going to be three point nine percent. Well, you didn't come at three point nine percent. You came in at three fifty-two percent. That's a combination of things. A combination of having someone like J P Morgan working with you. In fact, just to give you a perspective, last, yesterday when we priced this deal, there are twenty-three billion dollars worth of bonds being priced all across the country, and we had thirty million dollars in there. And they only had two million dollars in orders. We call it interested parties buying two million dollars. So J P Morgan came under those bonds because of their capital position and got under for twenty-eight million dollars. Today, this morning, when I checked with them, they still had a balance of about fifteen or sixteen million dollars. In other words, nobody to sell to. Why? Because a lot of people, you know, it's the holiday season. People in New York are not buying municipal bonds or buying other things, so, so that's just human nature. But at the end of the day, we still were able to get a lower rate than the one we anticipated back in November the seventh. You look at the P P F C O, the equipment note, that's a three twenty-four. We got you a two eighty-seven. You probably wonder why, you know, is the rate lower on the equipment versus the C Os? Because we're not going as long. In other words, the financing on the C Os is going out twenty years. On the notes, it's going out fifteen years. And then when you do the refinancing, it's even shorter. It's going out ten years on the tax exempt, and on the airport, it's going like six. That's why you see the rates being lower. But then the airport, the very last column, you'll see, oh, wait a minute. You told me it was going to be a two-ten. Why is it a two ninety-seven? Because we made a conscious decision to not borrow the money at a tax-exempt basis. We turned it into a taxable. And despite the fact that we turned into a taxable yield, we were able to get you a hundred thousand dollars in gross dollar savings versus a one fifty-five that we thought we could get you back on November seventh. So the rest is just market update. You know, Texas, on page eight, it says page eighty-seven, but it's, it's more like page seven. Texas at the very bottom says that we've, we've sold only forty billion dollars this year in Texas versus fifty-five billion last year at this time. So it, you know, the page eighty-eight, that's the yield curve. Look at the rates, thirty-year history, low, going lower. So good environment, and I'll stop right there, and I'll entertain questions you may have. If not, I guess we can have the readings.
Action on item twelve.
Would you approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries.
Next, we have action item number thirteen. Consideration in action to adopt ordinance number twenty-seventeen dash sixteen thirty-five authorizing-
Excuse me, I forgot, I forgot to bring this up. On number twelve, being a bond or a certificate of obligation, I had inquired about an ordinance that required a one percent of any bonds and certificates of obligation to be allocated to the beautification committee. So I'd like to ask if that's going to be done on this.
It's not in, it was, we, the request came in late, but we're going to be able to fund it during the year. We can come with a budget amendment, which will be around nineteen, one hundred ninety-seven thousand, whatever the amount is.
It was a hundred and seventy-two thousand.
Hundred and seventy-two thousand. We can certainly come to you in the near future and make, make an appropriation from the general fund for that, for that particular amount.
Okay, that's on the record.
Is this going to have to be voted on? I mean, I-
Yeah, we will come, we will come to you probably in, in January with a budget amendment to allocate these funds for the beautification, but it will be from the general fund.
Well, if, there's money there, that's fine. Thank you, Pete.
Okay, so we're, we're done with item number twelve. Item number thirteen?
Action item number thirteen. Consideration action to adopt ordinance number twenty-seventeen dash sixteen thirty-five authorizing the issuance, sale, and delivery of approximately five million one hundred and sixty thousand in aggregate principal amount of the city of Brownsville, Texas public property finance contractual obligations series twenty-seventeen for the purchase of personal property, securing the payment thereof by authorizing the levy of an annual ad valorem tax and approving and authorizing the execution of a paying agent registrar agreement, a purchase contract, an official statement, and all other instruments and procedures related thereto.
If I may, mayor, I'd like to make an oral amendment to amend the language on action thirteen to allocate money for police uniforms and for downtown cameras. I was advised by counsel that it doesn't have to be an exact amount. It just has to be language so that they can actually allocate the funds once the, the money comes into the treasury.
Again, commissioner, we can certainly do the same thing that we did for the beautification. We can take it from this particular C O, or we can also use the general fund, since the general fund has enough reserves to take care of the, because then we would have to come back to you, and we'll do whatever, whatever you, whatever your wishes are. But some of the monies that are already, have been appropriated for some of the equipment, the vehicles under the, you looking at about C O or the-
No, I'm talking about the one for personal property. That's why thirteen, Pete, not twelve.
That's the contractual obligations.
That one, we-
Yeah, because we have already, we have already spent some of that money, commissioner, on some of the equipment that, that was allocated, and we did this way back in May as far as reimbursement resolution. What I'm, I guess what I'm, what I'm addressing to you tonight is that we can certainly come back again in January and allocate some of these funds for, like you, you mentioned you wanted monies for the uniforms for, for the police, and what, I'm sorry, what was it?
And the downtown cameras.
We can certainly, remember, we have a, a fund balance of around twenty million. We, we are above the fifteen percent that we are required to have in the fund balance. And with your authorization, we can come back to you in January, again, with a, with a budget amendment to allocate funds for, for that particular expense.
And why, why can't it be?
It can be done, but-
The, well, it goes back to what Judge Neese brought up on number twelve. I mean, if we passed an ordinance in the past, and you're supposed to be allocating the money automatically, why do we have to come back? And it's the same thing with this one. Why do we have to keep coming back?
Are, are all the funds committed for the five million one hundred and sixty thousand? Is that what you're saying?
That's, that's Pete's point, that he's afraid that a lot of the money's already been committed.
Yeah.
Now, despite the fact that it's been committed, you happen to enjoy audit, audit pending of a very good savings account. So if you take it from, from the P P F C Os, or you take it from fund balance, his concerns will be addressed without a problem.
So there'll be a balance probably from this, this C O-
Conceivably.
That would be allowed to be used, and if not, you would go to the general fund.
Exactly. To make those purchases, if it's not for the uniforms, it's for equipment. But you, what he's saying is, you can do it either way. But if you want to amend the P P F C Os to include this, that's fine.
So, so there's no mistake. Let's just put that, those two items, mark them to be on the next agenda for, for January.
Okay, so then you wait for the next agenda, and we'll get it in the fund.
I withdraw my motion, but I want to make sure it's on the agenda, because I think you've been giving a directive, so I, I do want to see it there. I don't want to have to send an email, or Judge Neese send an email. We just would like to see it there.
Okay.
Please.
Pete, you can help her with the language on that.
Okay, thanks.
Motion to approve, item thirteen.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number fourteen.
Action item number fourteen. Consideration action to adopt ordinance number twenty-seventeen dash sixteen thirty-six authorizing the issuance, sale, and delivery of approximately five million six hundred and eighty thousand in aggregate principal amount of the city of Brownsville, Texas general obligation refunding bonds series twenty-seventeen A and approximately two million five hundred and twenty-five thousand in aggregate principal amount of city of Brownsville, Texas general obligation refunding bonds series twenty-seventeen B securing the payment thereof by authorizing the levy of an annual ad valorem tax and approving and authorizing the execution of a paying agent registrar agreement, a purchase contract, an escrow agreement, and official statement, and all other instruments and procedures related thereto.
So on this one, even though, for example, the last column, the interest rate's going up, you're still showing that we're going to have a savings.
Yes, sir. Yeah. And it's, it went up, but not in comparison to the rate that you pay today. So if you were to not refinance those airport bonds- So if you were to not refinance those airport bonds, you'd be paying the lender, the original lender, $100,000 more than what you could by, by doing that.
And 700 on the, on the-
That's correct.
The other one.
That is correct. It's just, you're swapping rates. Yeah. Lower rates.
Do I hear a motion on item number 14?
Motion to approve?
Second?
All those in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Okay, gentlemen.
Mayor, thank you very much, thank you, Commissioner.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays to you.
Yeah, it's gonna take you a while to, to sign all that stuff, okay? Item number 15.
Next, we have action item number 16, consideration and action to approve the 2018 City Commission meeting schedule. At this time, I'd like to present to you the 2018, the City Commission meeting schedules for the first and the third Tuesdays of every month. And then we also went ahead and we already added the budget meetings. And the other question I would have for you, for the November and the December meetings, if you'd like to change those, so we can do that now, or leave them on the first and the third, or the two meetings back to back.
I'd like to move them to the 13th in November and the 11th in December.
I had a question about July, don't we typically only meet once in July?
Okay, I tell you what, why don't we, why don't we start from the beginning? In other words, January, February, March, April, May, June are okay. Is that, is that everybody good?
January 2nd?
Because that's, we all got a copy of this before we started this meeting. Now we get to July, we generally only have one meeting.
Yes.
Okay.
Did you all wanna change that to the 3rd, or?
Because that's, July 4th is the following day. So, what is the pleasure of the commission?
The-
What did we do last year?
We had it the second week, I believe. Wait, this would fall under, it would be July the 10th. We won't have a meeting the first week of July until the second week. Because normally-
But we, did we have two meetings in July?
No, just one.
Okay, so if we change this to the- Why don't we just have a regular meeting on July the 17th? That way it gives you a little bit of a break between the meeting of June the 19th, gives you almost a month, and gives you time to spend some time with your kiddos. And just eliminate July the 3rd. How does that sound?
Sounds good.
Sounds good.
Okay, let's, let's, let's propose that. Now we get to November, Commissioner Longoria, you wanted some change?
November, from November 20th to November 13th.
Okay.
And in December, from the 18th to the 11th.
Okay. Anybody have any problems with those two? Okay. So, subject to eliminating July the 3rd and changing the November 20th to November the 13th, December 18th through December the 11th, is there a motion with those amendments on the floor?
Motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item number 16.
Agenda item number 16, consideration and action to appoint or reappoint four members to the Brownsville Community Improvement Corporation.
Good evening, good evening. So it's a time again to reappoint and appoint our board members. The opportunity to apply has been open since October, and we received eight applications. Three of our current board members are eligible for reappointment and have expressed the interest to continue to serve on our board for another two years. We have also had a vacancy that needs to be appointed because Jesse Deliata moved to Houston. So the applicant, we received, I believe, eight applicants? Yes. Eight applicants, and so we would like respectfully ask for your appointments.
I would like to motion to appoint Michael Lemus.
Second?
All those in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Now, do you need one for the same, reappoint the ones that are already there?
I would move to reappoint Mr. Celestino Villarreal.
Second?
All those in favor say aye.
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 I'll, I'm, I'm sorry.
Motion carries.
I'll move to appoint Commissioner Neese.
I'll second.
I'm sorry, did I-
All in favor?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you. Anisa?
Neese.
Judge Neese.
Oh, Judge Neese, okay. All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Motion.
If I can vote, I'll vote aye, if not, aye, stay.
Okay, motion carries. Now, you still have, do we still have Anisa Gonzalez and Evanado Galman?
That's correct.
But you only, can only pick out a one out of those, right?
That's correct, for a reappointment.
Okay, is there, is there another motion of the-
If I can motion again, I'd like to reappoint Anisa.
Okay. Anisa Gonzalez, is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries.
Okay, just to make sure, we have Mr. Michael Lemus, Commissioner Neese, Tino Villarreal, and Anisa Gonzalez.
Correct. Okay, item number 17.
Action item number 17, consideration and action of Brownsville Community Improvement Corporation project funding recommendations for fiscal year 2017 Capital Projects Grants Fall Cycle.
That is me again. Okay, so it's that time again for us to award our cycle two capital projects. We had application date of September, and we went through the, the 60-day comment period of public hearing, which ended just recently. Just to give you a little background, uh, BCIC, our mission of BCIC is to be a callist and proactively partner with organizations who invest resources to improve Brownsville, Texas quality of life, enhancing the aesthetics, cultural, and leisure amenities, and promote economic development to enhance the city's economic base. Our vision is by promoting and funding our assets in sports and recreational tourism and small business diversity, Brownsville, Texas can become a regional competitor in economic development, historic preservation, and tourism. Our capital projects, we only allocate a percentage of our sales tax towards grants for capital projects designed to serve a higher percentage of Brownsville residents and visitors, address identified community need, improve the area's appearance, foster economic development through tourism, demonstrate sustainability, and is aligned with our strategic goals and vision. Capital project is a two applic-, two-step application process. We require for applicants to submit a letter inquiry first to determine if the project is eligible for type B funds. Once the project is determined to be eligible, then we ask, we invite the applicant to submit a full application. Qualifications, qualification is, projects are eligible is based on section 501 through 505 of the Texas Local Government Code, and is aligned with our strategic plan, and contributes to the city's economic health. Examples include downtown revitalization projects necessary to increase sales tax revenue and foster investor opportunities, projects that are designed to increase recreational tourism and spur small business development or support the active transportation plan, and projects that support cultural, sports, fitness, recreational, entertainment, and community that will contribute to sustainability and growth of the Brownsville sales tax revenue. Any application, funding can be limited to expenditures that include land, buildings, equipment, facilities, infrastructure improvements. Guidelines, you have to be a 513 nonprofit organization or a city department. Must have conducted business in Brownsville at least a minimum of two years. Applicant must own the land, and if they do not, they need written acknowledgement approval from the owner expressing their approval of the proposed project. We do require at least a minimum of a 20% match. Funds awarded are on a cost reimbursement basis. And then, once they're awarded, we do have quarterly reporting, and within that, we also do state, status updates within our projects. So this time around, we had three applicants. We had the Brownsville Historic Association, the City of Brownsville, and Gorgas Science Foundation totaling $449,618. With our previous cycle one, we had a total of $899,618 funds approved. The first project is the Market Square Restoration. It's for $180,000, the total project cost is $225,000. The project will address the second-floor level of the Market Square Building and allow Brownsville Historic Association to use the entire Market Square Building and activate vacant space in the heart of downtown Brownsville. The renovations will include converting a respiratory space for archiving collections, revolving exhibit rooms, meeting and conference space that holds large groups, updated restrooms, and a renovated vault for their collections. They also include workstations that give opportunity for the researchers to study local history. This also does include updating the HVAC and the lighting system to make it possible for the exhibit galleries to attain high museum standards necessary for future accreditation. This is the proposed second-floor reservation, or sorry, restoration. We have three exhibit galleries, your meeting space, and your archives room. This is the current look of Market Square on the second floor, and this is what they're proposing. You have your workstations for the students and the researchers, your conference rooms, the renovated vault, and your exhibit room. The second project is Belt and Trail Phase 3. The funding amount is for $175,000, total project cost is $275,000. The project will extend the existing cycle on pedestrian trail by converting half a mile of the abandoned rail line easement between 10th and 12th Street to connect East Tyler and East Fillmore Street. The third phase of the Belt and Trail will reach into the Buena Vita neighborhood and surrounding areas in hopes to facilitate the benefits of the recreational opportunity and stay contivity into high, under, highly underserved and disadvantaged area. And the trail location will also benefit the Edelstein Park as well as the Buena Vita neighborhood. Right here, I know it's really hard to see, but the, the checker right, red mark is the proposed trail. And continuing with what is existing with the Belt and Trail, we'll have the bump outs, we'll have the butterfly gardens, we'll have native shade trees, as well as, you know, our native vegetation. Thirdly, is our Sable Palm Sanctuary Interpretation and Maintenance Project from Gorgas. The funding amount is for $94,618. The total project cost is $118,272. This project will install a series of over 100 interpretation signs and provide self-guided bilingual audio tours to help visitors better experience and understand the natural and cultural history of southern tip of Texas. Additionally, the funds will assist in expanding and improving the sanctuary's infrastructure and include construction of the new wetland observation blind, benches, picnic tables along the trails, and repairs and preventive maintenance in, on existing structures. This is the beautiful rap plantation that serves as our visitor center, and that offers historic and ecological tourism, and is also listed number two in Things to Do on, in Brownsville by TripAdvisor. The, the ones marked in, with our green arrows, the funding requests will renovate the construction of new structures. The orange lines and dots represent existing structures to be renovated. The red dots represent new structures to be constructed. And here is just a mock-up of the interpret, interpretation sign. Example of how it will enhance the visitors when they're walking, what, what they're looking at, and what equal and what historic value it has for the trail. So, that is our recommendation by the BCIC board. Anyone have questions?
Any questions?
I'll move to, to accept that.
Second?
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you. Item number 18.
Next, we have action, item number 18, consideration and action to approve the civil service director position to be included in the current pay matrix.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Commissioners. This evening, I'm here to request your consideration and action to approve adding a civil service director to our current pay matrix. In reference to City Ordinance Chapter 34, Civil Service Article 3, Section 3499, the City Commission shall determine what salary, if any, shall be paid to the director of the firefighters and police officers' civil service. A job analysis questionnaire was completed by our department, excuse me, and the recommended starting salary pay was $64,426 to the max of $88,586. This is for equivalent position of a full-time position. In your mind, you'll find the assigned job description and pay scale as well.
How are we functioning right now without that position open?
We have the vacancy commissioner, we didn't have a civil service director, so we're doing Becky, who sits in the city manager's office, was handling the, providing the tests and sitting in the meetings. That's what we're doing at this time.
So what is Becky gonna do now?
Continues to keep the operation, but at, at the part-time. And, and we're gonna look at the measurement of the time spent, and, and even, and actually how, how many hours is spent on this item, and then go with that, use that, the level of funding, and then cut it down.
What, what was the pay rate that you wanted to pay right now, just for this position?
It's an equivalent to a $64,426. In hourly terms, it would be, I don't have that info. Yeah, I don't have that info right now with me, but it's about $30 an hour, something like that.
And, and that, and that commissioner was used off, when we did the compensation study, they gave us a, a foundation jack that we throw in the information in there and come back with that salary range. Again, we're looking at the time spent on actually being the civil service director, and then prorating that. And, and we don't deem it to be a huge time spent on it, but I know the concern was to have inactive civil service director.
So she's gonna continue doing the same thing as she is right now, plus this?
Uh, that's correct.
But now compensated for it.
But now compensated for, based, and again, the civil service commission has the right to, to appoint who they, who they wanted. All we're doing with this motive was to put it on, to bring it to the commission, because it is a new position that is not on our matrix.
So Becky keeps her job?
Yeah, oh, yes, 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 yes. She, she, she gets, she gets appointed, she's, keeps her job, and then we just deem this position. We look at it, see how much it takes up of her time, and go from there.
The, the issue I have with this, I think, is that this civil service director is gonna be under the city manager, the way you're setting it up. And there needs to be more autonomy for the civil service commission so that the police and the firemen will have more confidence in taking their cases there than having the director under the city manager. So, and maybe I'm getting the wrong idea here, but I think there should be more autonomy and that the, the civil service director should be under the city, the civil service commission, not the city manager.
We can, we can, we can, whatever, get the will of the, the will of the commission.
Yeah, well, let's, if we can maybe table it, and then I'll be happy to meet with you, because we need to do a little restructuring in that commission to get some confidence. It'll save money instead of arbitration, and it'll, it'll be hopefully an easier way to solve some of these problems.
And on this one, Commissioner, all, all we're asking is, is not the organizational development of it, we're just saying, put it on the, because if whoever, the civil service commission did appoint somebody, so if they were to come out and appoint somebody again, there's no pay structure in our, in our, to, to even compensate anybody. This, this specifically-
How are they getting, who was the director before, before Becky?
It was Mr. Ayala, I believe, but it was a-
Carlos Ayala, but how were they paying him?
He, he, his, his, it was zero.
He wasn't being paid?
He wasn't paid, I believe so, yeah.
He was under his function as assistant city manager.
Yeah.
My only concern is the HR structure. If, what Commissioner Neese is saying, that we put it under the, under the committee, that we put this person under the committee, at what point does it become where that person is an independent employee, kinda like BCIC, and not under the structure of the city, not protected by HR? In other words, protecting the employee, not affecting it. But, in other words, if you take that employee, give it to the civil service, are you making them an anonymous board? Until where they're gonna be able to decide, and that person will no longer be an employee of the City of Brownsville? Will no longer be covered under HR or, or our benefits? That's, that's my only concern.
Yeah, I can see that, I can see that. So, can we explore this some more, or?
You know, table it, if you don't mind.
Oh, no, no, we're, we're at Mayor's-
Unless you have a time problem, because I think this is an issue that's been around for some period of time.
Yes.
And, and again, and both commissioners have good points. I mean, the, the thing about it is, independent contractors versus employees, it has a lot of liability, a lot of legal stratification that, that goes along with it. So, I would, I would ask the commissioner-
I'll move to table it.
Second?
All those in favor say aye.
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 And I, and I, I would just, after this, that's fine with this, it's, remember, is there, is a civil service, the, the civil service commission did appoint a civil service director. They, they went, they took a motion and they appointed-
Recently?
Recently, yeah, recently, yeah, within last-
Who did they appoint?
They appointed Becky. Yeah, that, and that's what I was trying to make point, was that Becky was appointed by the civil service commission, what they're authorized to do. And so when they, by, by appointing a civil service director, we just decided, okay, if, if the, the pay is set by the city commission. So we're just bringing in the, the pay of the city's commission, but the civil service commission did appoint a civil service director.
Okay, so now, let, let me just ask you, logically, this, this person has been appointed, who's paying her?
And exactly, that's what I'm at, Mayor, and I think that's what we're trying to do, is try to put this-
What I'm saying is, I mean, we don't, we all, we all have jobs here, but we don't take, I mean, other than the job that we're doing right now. We, we generally don't come to work unless we get paid.
And, 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 and the salary could be, it could be a zero pay, if that's what you wanna offer, and just incorporate into her job duties. That, that's, that's what we're, and I guess that's how-
See, I think, I think that's what Commissioner Longoria, I mean, there, there are some issues there. I mean, as, and I, again, I hate to say this as a lawyer.
The other issue is that it seems to be aggregating the city, the ordinance that says that, that the commission should set the salary. And if you're putting it in a ma-, in a matrix, then the commission doesn't get to set the salary.
Oh, no, it does, it's, it's, you get to set the salary because when we brought in the compensation- It's, you get to set the salary, because when we brought in the compensation study, it kind of gave, with all the numbers in it, all we're doing is adding in, and salary can be from, this is what we're putting at $64,000, because that's what the Jack said, but at the day, the commission can say, no, we don't want to, we want to give zero, we want to give this much. We're just presenting what our Jack said, what the compensation study we provided when it was approved.
And I don't think we're arguing with you or quarreling with you. The thing about it is, I think there are just some issues that should be clarified. And I think this is something that we need to go into the future, as opposed to saying, we'll take care of that later down the road. We just don't have that capability, because we don't have the staff.
And on that, on that also, I'd like to include, since we're tabling and you're going forward in it, at what point do we, why did we not go out for RFQs? Why did we not put it out for, in other words, if you can bring me an explanation as to why this wasn't put out to the general public for people to apply for it? That's, I just want an explanation.
Yeah, and it seems like the last, the commission is losing credibility. It has been, and I don't know how much credibility it has, but if you keep putting the director under the city manager, you're not going to get credibility in there.
No, and I think, I just want to make clarify, we weren't looking at organizational structure. This was just simple, the formality put up into potentially to offer them a salary at the point.
You said she's already been appointed.
That's by the civil service commission. We had no control over the, and I think what you're, Commissioner Longoria, is the civil service commission has the authority to appoint their director. That's what the bylaws on them say. They appoint a director regardless of the opportunity to say, let me go look, let me go look for HR.
Not to beat the issue, the issue dead, but my question is, why would the, I mean, I think it's confusing for one person to have two bosses. So why would the civil, and it's not a question for you, but for them, why would they appoint someone who's already employed by the city?
And at odds with what they're doing.
Right. It's because then, it's like, okay, which one am I supposed to do?
That's right.
And we can get a joint meeting with the city commission with the civil service commission if you want. Again, the civil service commission, I think, the civil service commission has their independent authority, I think that's what we're looking at. And so either way, all we can do, Becky just complete, becomes, as Commissioner Longoria stated, becomes this way, becomes independent. But again, we'll table the commission, I just want to make sure that we get the information out there. I do want to add last is, this was something new to the commission in that positions created, we want to, it has to come back to the commission to say, okay, there's a position being created, which is not in our pay matrix, that was proved before. So you'll see a lot more of these coming your way and saying, okay, the pay matrix that you approved does not include a civil service director. It doesn't include this. We need to come and send it to you, as commissioners, and you set the salaries on where they stand. So that's probably why this is kind of something new as well.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
I didn't vote, did we? Okay. So we have a motion to table in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Yes, Commissioner Neese voted, and then Commissioner Gallon second.
Okay, yeah, and it's been voted on and unanimously passed.
Next, we have action item number 19, consideration and action to award a contract for the purchase and delivery of heavy-duty wheelchair-lift-equipped fixed route and metro connect transit buses for the City of Brownsville B Metro Department.
Good evening, good evening, Mayor and City Commissioners. At B Metro's request, purchasing and contract service department solicited proposals for the acquisition of up to 15 heavy-duty wheelchair-equipped low-floor, standard-floor transit buses for the replacement of transit fleet for B Metro Fixed Route and Metro Connect services. Said buses will be used to replace, upgrade, an existing fleet of four Metro Connect transit buses and up to 11 fixed route heavy-duty transit buses. Under said procurement, including options, the bids for the 40-foot low-floor mixed, fixed route transit bus is $466,455. And $669,034 for a 35-foot hybrid low-floor fixed route transit bus. The base bid fell below staff's independent cost estimate of $468,750 for 40-foot heavy-duty low-floor buses and $675,000 for 35-foot hybrid heavy-duty low-floor buses. On November 29th and November 30th, 2017, representatives from the City of Brownsville and City of McAllen met to evaluate the submitted proposals. After review, the evaluation committee determined that the submitted proposals met all proposed specifications. A best and final offer was requested, and it came in at $458,199 for the 40-foot heavy-duty transit buses and $673,540 for the 35-foot heavy-duty hybrid buses. Gillick will also be extending the warranty on body structure and structural integrity warranty from three years, 150,000 miles, to 12 years, 500,000 miles. Total funding equals $1,800,000 for the procurement of four 40-foot heavy-duty transit buses derived from ICB 1701 grant, and funding for the remaining 11 35-foot heavy-duty transit buses will be derived from future federal funds through Tiger Grant and 5339 Formula Grant. At this time, B Metro respectfully requests this item to be placed on the agenda for December 12, 2017. City Commission meeting for consideration to award a contract to Gillick LLC for the purchase of this rolling stock. This will ensure milestones identified and the grant applications will be met. Questions?
This is the meeting of December 12, okay?
Yes, sorry about that.
Thank you, my friend. It's going to be a Merry Christmas. Okay, guys, any questions for this?
I'm just going to ask, again, not on this, but from B Metro, if you can bring us an update on the bus shelters, how we're doing on that, please. And I don't want to sound like a broken record, but maybe before my term is up, I can get some bus shelters.
And I do believe...
That will be for the meeting of January the 2nd, 2018.
There are bus shelters in the Tiger, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes, yes. And I do know that our grant and outreach manager does have an update memo for you guys, so I would be, you guys should be expecting that soon.
Well, thank you.
Look for it, we'll look for it.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next item, item number 20.
Item number 20, consideration actions for the removal of a board member for the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board Committee.
At our last commission meeting, we had some public comment, comments, commenters, and shortly after the meeting, I was tagged on a Facebook post, letting me know that some people had been making comments and things like that, that were not in line with city views. They were comments that could be viewed as racist and other categories that the city does not condone or represent. And so Commissioner Neese and I took the initiative after finding some other online postings to place the removal for this Parks, Parks and Rec appointment.
And I would like to say that the member that we're speaking about is Mr. Escobedo, and I know him personally, and I'm very saddened to see the approach that he's taking to his worldview. And I don't think that because of his age, he should be condemned and not given a chance to redeem himself. And it's a matter of free speech, what you say, but I think the community's thoughts about this differ greatly from what was promoted. And I know that you have your side of the story, and I guess if you want to come up and address us, you can. And that way, you can get out how you feel about this. But like I say, I hate to see you put in this position, but you are. So do you want to come say something? Is that all right, Mayor?
Yeah, I, you know, again, this is an interesting item, but, so I think in all fairness, we probably, I'm all for hearing whatever it is, I wouldn't...
Good evening, Mayor. It's nice to see you all again, but perhaps not the best circumstances, as you all heard. I am 17 years old.
Hear you very well, maybe speak closer to the microphone.
Please state your name, sir, I'm sorry.
I'm Jose Escobedo, Jose Antonio Escobedo, full name. I am 17 years old, and I was appointed in June to the Parks and Rec Board, the youngest city board member, Brownsville's history, to my understanding. You were tagged in a post, so I've heard, and you seem to be getting, all of you seem to be getting just one side of the story. I don't think any of you have any solid evidence to what my opinions even are. Personally, I believe myself to be a classical liberal. I don't, I don't like big government, I don't like the intrusion of, what is it, of government on people's rights. There's two people I hate in this world, it's Nazis and it's communists. I don't like totalitarians. I'm not of that side of the story that you've heard, but I seem to have been picked up by a certain group of people that think that some of my opinions are wrong, think that should be ostracized and punished for what reason they would want me just completely removed and, I guess, punished, I'm not too sure. But unless you have any questions for me directly, that's all I can say.
Okay, and I'm not familiar with, I don't do a whole lot of social media, or Facebook, or any of that stuff, and I don't know that it's got a filter to figure out the credibility or the lack thereof. But have you been, are you familiar with whatever was posted? And are you disagreeing with what's, what was posted? I don't even know what was posted.
First of all, Jessica, why don't you tell them what the problems are that you perceived?
The problem that I perceive is that another member of the youth advisory, it wasn't really an advisory board, it was, we asked for your input on, to tell us how our youth could better educate us and how you can be helpful in the city. We want you to be a part of what we turn into, and you are a future leader. So we had asked this board to come together, and it was brought to my attention that some comments had been made at the Parks and Rec Town Hall for the boulder that sits in our Washington Park. The commission had very, very, put a lot of thought and effort into bringing the community together so we could all decide together, united, what we wanted to do with it, how we wanted to address it, where we felt like it should go. And I saw a lot of online content of you telling people, your opinion is duly noted and discarded, and things like that. And I just feel, I'm not saying you're a bad person, I make mistakes too, I'm a human. I have embarrassed myself on many occasions, but I learn from it and I grow from it. And if I could teach you anything, it's like that I, we're all human and we all make mistakes. But when we sit in these chairs and when we sit on these boards, we have to understand that we, we need to be aware of other people and their feelings and consider them and be united in changing who we are and how we feel. And you can never tell somebody, oh, you don't matter, or, I don't care about your opinion, because we're just here to learn from each other and be better and be a better community.
Was this in context of the meeting itself, or was this just in social media?
And so this goes to his inexperience more than anything, and it doesn't go to any comments, because I'm trying to figure this out myself. And I don't know if there was any comments attributable to you of a racist nature or anything, but it was more in the manner, I think, in which you handled your, your chair or your charge with that committee. So if it's not anything in particular that's racist, I think that we should give Mr. Escobedo an opportunity to better himself and learn from this experience.
At any time, did you share content that was created by the other youth committee board member that was, I hate to even say the word, neo-Nazi? Did you share any of that on your Facebook accounts?
We've gotten complaints from the public about, about this, this thing that happened, okay? And you were drawn into it, but this is an opportunity to, to address it. So, you know, if you weren't part of this dissemination of neo-Nazi propaganda, then you shouldn't be punished for it. But if you're inexperienced in how you handle a public meeting, then you just need to learn from this mistake.
Commissioner Longoria?
I must speak on behalf of my student. You're totally entitled to your expression under the First Amendment. I've not given my opinion publicly on the Rock, because I personally feel that I'm of the opinion that it should stay where it's at. I don't have a either or, you know, either pick on the, on the fight. I do, as somebody that greatly cares for you, I want you to think very clearly as to, is this a mistake that might have, maybe you got mixed up in something, shouldn't have gone and said, like Commissioner said, maybe because of your experience, your age. But by the same token, you know, don't let your rights under the First Amendment be violated either. If you have an opinion, you're totally entitled to your opinion, might not agree with it, but you need to understand that when you serve on a board, you're at the mercy, not, I'll say at the mercy, you know, of being removed from a board, and discretion is advised. Social media ruins us. I was a victim of, you know, things going on in social media, you know? I think everybody has caught their own part.
We've all had it.
And, you know, but most unfortunately, you know, with us, it's a little bit more difficult, because the people that elect us have to come with a petition with you, it's four votes and you're off. Take it as a learning experience, I'll say. Use it as a learning experience, maybe it was, you know, that exactly, but understand that as you continue, and, you know, it's admirable what you always want to do, you want to be involved, and, but always take into account that there's always two sides. When we're up here, you know, we're nonpartisan. We can't be Republican, we can't be Democrat. We need to make the decisions that we need to make, you know, holistically. And understand that that's what you're doing when you're representing us on one of our boards.
Yes, sir.
I think this young man is learning a lot by what all of you are saying. And so I would, personally would ask you guys to rethink this issue and perhaps maybe table it. Jose, you just look like a very nice young man with a great future, and I want you to succeed. That's just me.
Me too.
I would make a motion to table.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Merry Christmas and take care of yourself, okay?
Thank you, sir. Merry Christmas to all of you, too.
Good luck.
Okay, item number 21.
Action item number 21, consideration action to appoint or reappoint a board member to the Greater Brownsville Incentives Corporation.
Mayor, I move to appoint Commissioner Jessica Tetra.
We got, we got Mr. Gil. Okay.
I'll second the motion.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, let's, let's take a hand. One.
I broke. Ayes?
I guess I'm going to vote for myself, too. Thank you.
Motion carries. Did you get all the ayes? It's Commissioner Reese, Joel Mungia, Rose Gallon, Sasa, Tetra, and Laquarius, so it's unanimous, okay?
Thank you very much.
Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Gil, that was a great presentation.
Nice way to end the year.
Merry Christmas.
Nice to have you back.
Yes, second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.